We're having a regular session of council tonight where we'll be going through some reports and communications and then also reading some ordinances. Our first business is to establish a quorum. All council members are present. However, our clerk of council is not with us tonight. So, in just a short minute, we'll be appointing the acting clerk of council. In fact, I would like to go ahead and do that motion immediately. And this would be to appoint Chris Fall as our acting clerk of council for this evening.
I'd like to make a motion that we do so.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion by Councilmember Butler, a second by Councilmember Pappy, for appointing Chris Fall as our acting clerk of council. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The motion carries. All right. Our disposition of minutes. We are for the regular session held on March 21st, 2016, and we would like to have a motion for the approval of these minutes.
So move.
Second.
And second. Councilmember Conklin, seconds. We have a motion and a second for approval of the minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion carries. We now have communications. Councilmembers have received one communication from the Ohio Division of Liquor Control, and this is a permit application for Kaiser's Restaurant that is operating out at the mall. It's for a D-5B, and that B is the designation for the mall location. And that would allow for liquor on-premises consumption only, and then beer and wine beverages for on-premises or off-premises in the original sealed container until 2:30 a.m. And council would have until April 18th if they would want to send any kind of responses to the Division of Liquor Control. And that's the only communication that I have this week. Do councilmembers have other communications? Councilmember Conklin.
Yes, thank you, President Nisley. I fielded one phone call from an Athens resident who has seen the paving schedule for 2016, and he wanted to note that Northwood Drive is in need of resurfacing, and it's not on the schedule.
Okay. Thank you. Communications from any other councilmembers? Okay. Move on. Communications from the law director. Communications from Mayor Patterson.
I have a few items. One is just a reminder that April is Autism Awareness Month. Today was Wear Blue Day. I also received something just earlier today, and that is that the Athens County Free Scrap Tire Drop Off Event is scheduled for Saturday, April 9th. It's from 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at the Wayne National Forest Headquarters on Route 33 in between the Plains and Nelsonville. The event has the capacity to collect 1,200 scrap tires, which will later be recycled. No tires are accepted from shops, dealers, repair shops, and no tire exceeding 54 inches in height or 16 inches in width will be collected. I should also mention that during the Household Hazardous Waste Event, which is taking place on the 23rd of April at the community center, tires can be dropped off there as well. Again, not from shops or anything, you know, repair dealers and so on and so forth, but there is a fee associated with those tires that are dropped off at the community center as well as e-waste can be brought there. The League of Women Voters of Athens County presents Focus on Homelessness. This is Wednesday, April 6th, from 6:30 to 8:00 p.m. at the Rec Center, Meeting Room A. It will include presentations from representatives from the Athens Metropolitan Housing, Integrated Services, Veterans Administration, 317 Board, Timothy House, My Sister's Place, Columbus Recovery Center, and others. So, worth making note of. And finally, just to inform people, I did receive a notice this morning that Pete the Cat, who's on the monitor right now, has arrived here in the city building. This is something to raise recognition for what Beacon School does. They have put this together, and Pete the Cat will be in various locations throughout the city over the course of several months. But we were lucky enough, fortunate enough, to have Pete wander in. We're the second stop on Pete's trail throughout the city. He spent a week at Passion Works and now is here with us.
Good. Great.
That's all I have.
Okay. And then, so those were communications. Any other formal reports from you, Mayor? Or, okay. Thank you. We'll move on to ordinances for third reading. And the first one is Ordinance 3816, an ordinance amending the 2016 appropriation ordinance, and this is introduced by Councilmember Reisner.
Thank you, Madam President. I move that we adopt 3816.
Second.
We've gone through this first and second readings. We've discussed it. Let me just read it one more time for the public record. This is an ordinance amending the 2016 appropriation ordinance, Section 1. The 2016 appropriation ordinance, oh, 12015, is hereby amended by decreasing the appropriation to Water Administration Fund 740, 636 TC 600, transferred by $54,000, and decreasing the total appropriation by said amount. Section 2, the 2016 appropriation ordinance, is further amended by appropriating from the unappropriated balance the following sums. $9,300 to General Fund Police, 101207 TC 300 for Lex pole system. $1,100 to General Fund Code 101351 TC 500 for radio purchase. $10,000 to Water Administration Fund 740, 636 TC 500 for purchase toward census handheld water meter reader, and $10,000 to Water Maintenance Fund 740, 365 TC 500 for purchase toward census handheld water meter reader, and increase the total appropriations by said amount.
Okay. Any other comments? All right. We have a motion and a second for approval of Ordinance 3816. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion carries, and the ordinance is approved. We now have a series of ordinances for second reading. Most of them, we will be merely reading through the titles so that they've had the second reading. A few of them may be suspended tonight because of time sensitivity on deadlines. Ordinance 1316 is an ordinance authorizing disposal and replacement of a salt truck with snowplow in the Public Works Department. This is introduced by Councilmember Pappy. Ordinance 3916, an ordinance authorizing disposals of two sewer trucks in the Public Works Department and authorizing the Service Safety Director to replace the two vehicles. Introduced by Councilmember Pappy. Ordinance 4016 is an ordinance closing a portion of Mill Street on Saturday, May 14th, between North McKinley Avenue and South Green Drive for the American Society of Mechanical Engineers Human Powered Vehicle Challenge, and this is introduced by Councilmember Pappy.
Thank you, President Nisley. I move to suspend 4016.
Second.
And reason being is we need to have our 30 days in effect prior to May 14th. We will not be meeting to meet that deadline.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to suspend Ordinance 4016. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The rules have been suspended. Councilmember Pappy.
I move to adopt 4016.
Second.
And, as you recall, we had a nice presentation by the engineering students, and this is for a small portion of Mill Street near South Green Drive to McKinley to be closed for this event on Saturday, May 14th.
Okay. Thank you. So we have the motion and second for approval of Ordinance 4016. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The motion carries. The ordinance is adopted. Ordinance 4316 is an ordinance authorizing 2016 rapid water line replacement. This is project number 303, and introduced by Councilmember Butler. Ordinance 4416 is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a partnership agreement that the Athens County Commissioners as applicant and grantee have funded for submission of an application to the Office of Development, Ohio Development Services Agency, for the 2016-2018 Community Housing Impact and Preservation Program, otherwise known as CHIP. It's introduced by Councilmember Butler. We now have ordinances for third reading.
First.
First reading, excuse me. And some of these, then, we will be offering explanations for them, but likely not voting to suspend on any of them tonight, I don't think. Ordinance 4516 is an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to enter into a participatory LPA, State Agreement for Bridge Deck Resurfacing and City of Athens Signs, and sign installation on Athens State Route 682 and declaring an emergency. This is introduced by Councilmember Pappy.
Thank you. We discussed this at committee last week, and there are some more details that we'd like to share. We had to change a few of those details. I'm sure that the mayor has information. It has to do with ODOT, and we wanted to, when we discussed it before, we did not discuss the signage on the actual bridge. And so, we needed to relook. We were just talking about the deck resurfacing. And so now, we need to look at the City of Athens sign installation to be added to that. So, that's why I wanted to discuss it a little bit more this evening. Mayor, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Sure. I mean, the original grant that was previously passed under 110-15 for the ODOT project was not a participatory grant or participatory legislation. In other words, it was strictly from ODOT. It didn't have anything in there to add anything onto the bridge, i.e. to put this sign on there. So, since the city does desire to hang a City of Athens signage on the bridge, we, the legislation would essentially move forward with an endeavor to cap up to $30,000 to have this done. Some of you know there is a sign that says City of Athens over, across Richland Avenue. That particular signage, I believe, came in at about $11,000. This, since it's a larger bridge span, over 33, 3250, it would be a larger sign, a longer sign certainly, and so it's anticipated that, obviously, it's going to be more expensive. So that's why the cap at $30,000. If the bids come in over $30,000, then this wouldn't be performed.
So, do you have a mock-up of this sign already? And are we designing the City of Athens, or is it ODOT designing? Who's determining that? And is it going to look like the other one?
It's going to look exactly like the other one.
Okay.
Exactly like the other one. It's going to be the city's colors, the blue and green, and it's just going to be more spread out, I guess, for lack of a better way to put it. It'll be a larger sign, so it's scaled to the bridge itself.
Okay.
That's all. There's no, there's no pre-design done to it other than matching the old, I shouldn't say the old, the other side.
President Nisley? So on both sides of the bridge?
Both sides of the bridge.
Okay. Thank you. So, the $11,000 covered both sides in our last endeavor?
Correct.
So, okay.
Correct.
Just to give people an idea. Okay. Any other questions on council?
This would need to be suspended in order to go through, for the bid date, and getting this all lined up with the project itself, with the ODOT project, the current bridge project.
So you're asking for a suspension tonight?
Yeah.
Okay. I've moved to suspend 4516.
Second.
For the reasons that the mayor just described in terms of the need to get the paperwork in, in time. And again, this is for the City of Athens signage on the route, on 682 that goes across Route 3350.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules for 4516. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The rules have been suspended. Councilmember Pappy.
Move to adopt 4516.
Second.
Okay. For all the reasons we discussed.
Okay. Any additional comments? A motion and a second to approve Ordinance 4516. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The motion carries, and the ordinance has been adopted. Ordinance 4616 is an ordinance amending the 2016 appropriation ordinance, 12015, and ordinance 8315, authorizing right-of-way acquisition, construction, and construction engineering of a bike path from Armitage to Columbus Road, which is project number 270, and declaring an emergency. Introduced by Councilmember Pappy.
Thank you, Madam President. We've also discussed this at committee, and basically what we're looking at is, it's a funding model in terms of moving funds around from different pots of money to make sure that we have everything in line. Some of this money needs to be spent in a timely manner. I believe it's July 1st, one deadline. So we want to make sure that the money is all where it needs to be. I will go ahead. We do not need to suspend this. I do not believe.
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. So, I mean, I don't know everyone has it in front of them. They can, they can review it. But the main piece is that Section 2 is amended to read as follows. The Service Safety Director is hereby authorized to expend up to $2,310,000 from the following. $270,000 from Street Fund 220 TC 500, $100,000 from the Recreation Fund, 270 TC 500, $600, $5,000 from Capital Improvements Fund 580 TC 500, and $1,335,000 Small Cities Grant Fund 589 for the TC 500 for said project. All of this money, we basically have. It just needs to be appropriated in the proper line item areas.
I might.
Okay.
Yeah, I just wanted to add that, again, this isn't happening in a complete void or willy-nilly, that we had performed a pedestrian bicycle master plan a number of years ago with citizen input and government input, and this falls into that bigger vision of connecting our bike path with these spurs. And this would, if I'm correct, this would connect up to University States. Is that, no, this is the...
It connects to the bike trail there near Armitage Road.
Okay. Thank you. And we did, during our recent street tour as well, I think the Public Works Director acknowledged these efforts as well and reminded us of the intent.
And the majority of this was funded through the, through ODOT, through federal money as well, and then as well as the, we received the Small Cities Grant Fund. This has been a long project. I know it was discussed prior to me even coming on council. So it's been in the making for many, many years.
Good. Good to see it moving along. We have Ordinance 4716, an ordinance closing a portion of Court Street between Washington and Carpenter on Saturday, July 23rd, 2016, from 8:00 a.m. to midnight for Ohio Brew Week. And this is introduced by Councilmember Pappy.
Thank you. I'll briefly discuss, but basically, we discussed this at committee last week as well. We had a presentation from Brew Week, and the situation is pretty well under control. This has been an event that has now happened for several years, and takes a lot of planning, and people come from all over. It's quite a boon for the city in terms of tourism.
Okay. And we'll move on with the second two corollary ordinances for Brew Week. And this next one, 4816, is an ordinance suspending the enforcement of Athens City Code Section 13.04.10, unnecessary noise in the downtown area on July 23rd, 2016, for Ohio Brew Week. This is introduced by Councilmember Pappy.
Thank you. Again, this is something that needs to be suspended when we have an event on Court Street. So, ordinance.
Okay. Ordinance 4916 is the last in the series for Brew Week, and it's an ordinance suspending the enforcement of Athens City Code Chapter 11.04, vending, peddling, and soliciting to allow vending in a designated area on Saturday, July 23rd, 2016, during the Ohio Brew Week event. And it's introduced by Councilmember Pappy.
Thank you again for 4916. It's a routine ordinance when we do have an event where we close the street. We often bring in vendors, and of course, it's Ohio Brew Week, so they'll be vending as well.
Okay. The next one is Ordinance 5016, and this is an ordinance closing a portion of Union High and Washington Streets on Saturday, August 13th, 2016, for the King Midget High Street Challenge. Introduced by Councilmember Pappy.
Thank you. Again, we had a presentation recently regarding the King Midget. For many people who don't know, they were built here in Athens, Ohio, and this is their 10-year, every 10 years, they like to come back to Athens. And there's a series of events that weekend of August 12th and 13th for this event.
Okay. We now have Ordinance 5116, and that's an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to advertise and accept bids where necessary and enter into contract for uniform recycling carts. And this is introduced by Councilmember Butler.
Thank you, President Nisley. Again, we discussed this in committee meeting, and this ordinance goes into a little more detail regarding the purchase of the 64-gallon attached lid recycling containers. They will be replacing the red containers that are approximately 18-gallon bins. The point of the larger containers is that you're able to, you're able to get more volume in this larger container. So, the whole point of single-stream recycling is to get more volume, and the larger containers will accommodate that. I also want to acknowledge that we're fortunate in that the recycling partnership out of, I think it's Chagrin Falls Church, Virginia, is wanting to help us with the $80,000 grant process, in which that would be assisting us. We're still throwing down $250,000 for this purchase, which then covers the recycling carts, marketing, educational campaigns, which are part of the grant requirement. It is a lot of money. I spoke with colleague on council here, and they expressed their concern to me about that. But I think, I see this as an investment in our future to help get the word out with the recycling in our community, its value, its importance. We were ahead of the curb years ago, approximately 30 years ago. I believe we were the first community in the state of Ohio to begin curbside recycling, from my notes. And this continues that process to catch up now. A lot of communities are already doing this, and I feel that this is a step in the right direction for us, and obviously, we have three readings to discuss it. But I believe Councilmember Pappy also had some concerns.
I just wanted to, I know I brought up several questions last week. I did receive some communication. I decided to wait till this moment, and some was, a couple were pro 64-gallon containers. There were a couple others that were not. They thought they were too big. So, I'd just like to go on record tonight, I am in support of the grant, but I would like to go on record to say that I would like to see some options and some discussion as we move forward, if we are spending $250,000, that we discuss different options for different people. And, and I don't just mean the disabled or that group. I really think there are, you know, one-people households, two-people households, and this may be overkill for them, and storage is an issue as well. So I really would like to see that be a part of this rollout, that there be some kind of discussion that goes on about how we move forward if this all works out.
I'd like to second that. I had a lot of people, especially in the Near East Side, where the yards are quite small, and many people said 64. This is like a huge overkill for their particular situation. And I think that if we're spending, my concern is that we're being told for $80,000, we only get this, we have to go for this type of option, and that there's another option. You know, we're spending the vast amount of money on this. And so, I would like also to see some options out there, and not only for disabled, but, as Michelle said, you know, other households that just don't produce that much waste, recycling.
Councilmember Reisner.
I like this. I'm gonna, I'm in favor of the 64-gallon. The red ones that we have now are already, they're 18, and I see people putting two, three, and four out. So they're already topping the 64-gallon limit right there. This ordinance is an appropriation ordinance. It's not, it has nothing to do with policy, and thus, I think that's what we're really talking about. When we talk about options, that's a policy decision. And I can see where some people would be better off with the 18, but we're not throwing the 18s away. I mean, they're, they're coming back. We still retain ownership of those. So, they can still be used. But I think the majority of the people of Athens, I certainly know on the South Side, which I represent, the South Ward, would really greatly benefit from the 64-gallon. So I'm on record for the 64.
And I'll add, before I recall on the mayor, I'll just add, similarly, I was riding my bike around town Sunday night, which on my side of town, garbage days, and on Monday, and I similarly noticed a number of yards that had two or three red bins in the front yard, all filled to capacity. Granted, it was a sort of an exceptional weekend with a lot of mothers visiting, but nonetheless, this was also families that I was driving by, family-owned houses and residential neighborhoods that are non-student areas that had a number of bins out there. So I could see benefit in the 64-gallon container. I think they're more sight, I think they're more appealing with a closed lid. I think that also is more sanitary. I think they're easier to maintain and take care of. They're on wheels, which I think also makes it easier for people to move them to and fro. Thank you. Councilman?
Thank you, Member Butler. I would also note that this follows on the heels of recommendations that came out of an ad hoc committee last year, I believe it was about a year ago, that the committee chaired by former councilmember Ed Baum made recommendations that we move toward, implement uniform receptacles, both for trash and for recycling. So, this is the next step in that process.
I remember doing that.
Thank you. Councilmember Reig.
I would just like to add that if these were free, I would certainly not oppose them. I would advocate them entirely. But as a guardian of the money of the citizens of Athens, I tend to think of walking into a store and seeing a two-for-one and being tempted to buy something you don't need at all.
Good point.
And I just cannot see spending that much money for, I believe it's $3,500? Is that the number of them?
Up to 5,000.
Up to 5,000 of them. For, I'm sure they would be needed and used by some people in Athens, but again, 5,000 of them. I don't think there are 5,000 households that would make exceptional use of them. So I have a concern, mainly the cost.
Mayor?
Thank you. I think the point that needs to be raised is that, yes, I mean, the appropriation is $250,000, but this is a reimbursement grant. So it'll be $80,000 coming back, so really, we're looking at $160,000, $165,000, which is still a lot of money. I, I get it. I also look at walking away from $80,000 on a granting mechanism that's going to get us on the path of having uniform trash cans, and as a recycling. So keep that in mind. Yes, they're large, 6250. Yes, they're large, 64 gallons is a large container, footprint-wise, it's, the footprint is no different than our 18-gallon trash receptacles, or recycling receptacles now. Another point that's already been raised, and something I want to reinforce, is the fact that these do have fixed lids. I don't know if anyone here experienced that, likely you did. Last Wednesday, when recycling came through my neighborhood during the high-wind event, there's no lid on these. I spent more time chasing recyclables around the neighborhood than I did putting my recyclables out. This will alleviate that. We did reach out to Recycling Partnership about the possibility of having 48-gallon. In their experience as a granting organization, they, what they have seen in other municipalities that have gone through this, New Jersey, I can't remember which city in New Jersey, but one of them was, was kind of a test case for them, and the 48-gallons didn't work, for whatever reason. They were pretty firm on them being the 64. We can work with them to use our 18, so if someone chooses to use the smaller 18, we can continue to use those. My personal thoughts, if I have to roll 68 or 64-gallon container out twice, you know, every two weeks, as opposed to every week, that's a savings on me as well, to where I'm sitting there just letting my recyclables pile up inside this thing, and then I roll it out. That's also a cost savings for one less stop that Athens Hocking Recycling Center truck has to make along the way, and I can see potential. This is worth reaching out to them, to sit there and over time, do their own metrics to see what kinds of gas savings are they starting to see with people using 64-gallon, because they're not stopping as frequently throughout the city. If people don't use them as much, yet they're using, there's likely residents out there that might fill one of these 64-gallon containers, it might take them a month. Well, it's a month that it can be sitting somewhere, and it's, but it's, now it's three times less stop along the route, when the garbage trucks are coming along. So I see, for me, I see the, the benefit to the city, and to the community, and to our environment, much more positive than I see the negatives. I understand concerns. I understand citizen concerns too, with the larger ones. There is also the clause in this grant where they do allow for individuals living with disabilities, there are a couple clauses that are in there, that they do allow for that, in terms of size, but I just, I feel that this is a, the proper step in the right direction to help us reduce our wet trash that's going into landfill.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks for all the discussion, and airing of the concerns now, to see how we can incorporate as many different possibilities to accommodate our citizens, for the new program. We'll now move on to announcements and other business. We have appointments for several commissions tonight, the first one being the Environmental and Sustainability Commission. We have an appointment to a vacant position.
Thank you. I have a nomination of Andrew Ladd, and for, I imagine that most of you are familiar with Andrew Ladd, since he helms the recycling program at Ohio University now. He's a graduate of Ohio University, and worked under Ed Newman, who is a guru of the solid waste area, and has returned to our area in the last few years to lead our university recycling efforts, and so he has graciously agreed to serve as a volunteer on our Environment and Sustainability Commission. So I move to approve the appointment of Andrew Ladd to the commission.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second for the approval of the appointment of Alan Ladd to the Environmental and Sustainability Commission. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Okay, appointment approved. The next one is an appointment to the Board of Zoning Appeals, and I believe that's Mr. Aaron Thomas, who has lived in Athens for a number of years, since graduating from Ohio University, and operates a business with Class A sounds over in the East Side. And so, if we could have a, did you have any other comments or any additional biographical information to add?
You can certainly add the alternate role for the Board of Zoning Appeals. There's a vacancy there.
Did somebody vacate? Did somebody leave?
I think it was just someone termed out on the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Termmed out and did not want to.
Return.
Okay. All right. If I would entertain a motion?
Can I?
Yes, go ahead.
Go ahead, finish this.
I move to approve the appointment of Aaron Thomas to the VZA alternate position.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. And Councilmember Pappy, did you have any additional comments?
I just want, hopefully, administration can update the, the website with the, all the right people who are on the commissions. I, that's just, I think that sometimes takes a while.
I know Patty, yeah, the point well taken, and I know Patty's been working on a document that has all, we've been in the past few months updating all of those, so you're right, getting it out to the public's important. Thanks for the comment.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second for the approval of the appointment of Aaron Thomas as an alternate to our Board of Zoning Appeals. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Mr. Thomas has been appointed, his approval, yes, his appointment has been approved. The last one is for the Commission on Disabilities, and this is for David McNelly to serve on the commission, and in this case, I do believe we have a number of resumes to share with council members. He lives in Millfield, Ohio, and does have a professional of master's level social work with a disability focus, and over 10 years of experience in the nonprofit field. Yes, Mayor Patterson?
I just want to share that, I know David fairly well. David has been one of the non-appointed, frequent attendees at the Commission on Disabilities, and when this position, when a seat opened up, and it was unfortunately with the passing of David Pletcher, that we, I reached out to ask David if he would be interested in serving, and it was with an emphatic yes that he wanted to be a part of the commission.
I've worked with David, and I think he'd be excellent.
Good, good to hear that comment. Yes, Councilmember Butler?
I comment in jest. I just see one shortcoming, and it looks like his bachelor's degree is from Miami University.
I spoke to him about that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Nevertheless, we'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the appointment of David McNelly to the Commission on Disabilities.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval of Mr. McNelly's appointment to the commission. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Mr. McNelly's been appointed, and we thank all three of these persons for their service on the, on these different commissions. It's a very, very important activities that each of these commissions do to help us further different causes and interests and projects, or zoning appeals in particular, for different projects coming forward, so it's really important work is being done there. Next week will be a council committee meeting, and I wanted to find out from other council members, from the chairs or vice-chairs, if there are need for any committee meetings. Finance and personnel?
Yes, but we'll be meeting at noon on April the 13th, rather than Monday.
Okay.
It'll be a Wednesday, at noon, instead of in the evening, here in council chambers.
Okay.
I invite all city officials and stakeholders to attend.
Okay. So that's at a different time? That's at Wednesday at noon for the finance and personnel committee meeting? And transportation?
Transportation for Monday night.
Okay, for Monday night.
I'm not aware of any city service safety needs. Mayor, do you know?
Nothing pops in my mind, really.
Okay. Well, just so long as we know within the next day or so, so we can get, I'll put it out to notice then. And we now, moving on, we have an opportunity for citizens to speak on legislative items and city services not covered on the agenda. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to come forward to speak on any item that was not on the agenda tonight? Yes, sure. Yes, you do need to come up, and, and also tell us your name and address, so that we'll have it for the record.
Do you want me to sign this too?
Yes, please. Thank you.
Well, you all recognize me, you know why I'm here. So in a few weeks, this community will once again be invaded by number fest. Will we yet again experience the questionable rights of a corporation, prime social group, to make money at the expense of our community? For 13 years, this controversial event has been allowed to grow. I reached my limit last year, as I watched emergency squad drivers attempt to move through a sea of drunks on State Route 56, in an effort to do their job. Attendees blocked the road to the hospital and created a real danger to anyone in an emergency situation caught in that chaos. Concerns have been presented to local authorities, but we're repeatedly been told that there's nothing within the law that can be done, and that the priority is avoiding a mass riot, along with jurisdiction debates. As I understand it, the responsibility and duty of law enforcement and government officials is protect and serve the people of our community, the people who elected them, the people who take, pay taxes for their services. With Fest 14 quickly approaching, I worry that proposed changes are insufficient in preventing the usual rowdy and illegal behavior from happening. Has anyone ever been arrested during number fest for open containers, public urination, drunken disorderly conduct, illegal taxis, blocking a state route, as well as the route to the hospital? This event has grown and become more out of control every year. It's time for a change. I want to emphasize that this is not just about my space or keeping young people from having fun. I am concerned for citizens in the community, as well as young people who attend this event. I also wonder how other annual events in this community will be affected on April 16. Will the International Street Fair experience be subjected to the rude behavior that it was last year, and how irresponsible drinking affect kid fest and prom? I ask you as concerned citizens, and this is just to the people in general, but I would really like it if people could take pictures to document the violations that take place during number fest, because if we don't have any kind of validation and documentation, nothing's ever going to change. And it's really not a good, you know, it's not conducted in a very safe manner, and so I really feel like it needs to change, and I would really like to ask people who are watching, anyone that's in this corp, in this room right now, to please use your phones, take pictures of anything that you see that's a violation to our safety and to our respect by people who primarily don't even live in this community, that violate our community. Thank you.
We appreciate your coming back again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, because I noticed in the AM news that people were arrested for protesting tuition hikes and blocking the road, and yet, nobody's ever arrested for blocking State Route 56 or the route to the hospital. This seems rather strange.
Thanks for the comments.
Good point.
Why didn't the patrol do that?
That being, is there anybody else in the audience that wants to make a comment tonight? If not, then we'll entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor of adjourning signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We stand adjourned at 7:43 PM. Thank you.